Yes. Madam Clerk, do we have a cork?
Yes, Mayor.
Does anybody have any corrections to the minutes? Sitting down here, stand is presented. Next is a public comment period. If you're here for something that's not on the agenda, I'd like to address the Commission. Stand there and move on to... Oh, okay. Come on forward. Say your name.
My name's TJ Horton. I'm an athletic trainer at Garden City Community College, and I'm also on the Libwell-Finney County Committee. I'm here today to thank the Commission and Sam Kern for the study and all the input into the crossing walk or the crossing that's going in on Campus Street. It's leading from campus to the football fields, the softball fields, and the practice fields. One of my main jobs is to look out for the safety, well-being, and healthcare of our athletes. This is something that I mentioned six years ago when I first started at the college, and it's nice to see it transform into this. So, we've seen a lot of, over the last six years, I've seen a lot of human frogger being played across the street, so it's, you know, it's nice to see this happen. So, Dr. Swender would also like me to convey his gratitude and work for the college in getting this done for the safety of our students and our student athletes. So, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, I think we're ready for 6A.
Item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider a request from Melissa Gallegos, Grant Development Manager at Kansas Children's Service League, to allow the mayor to proclaim April 2017 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I know Melissa has got some stuff for you that she wants to hand out, a few words.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for having us this afternoon. As you all may be aware of, April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and Kansas Children's Service League is the chairman of Prevent Child Abuse in America. And we just asked today that you make this proclamation declaring April as the National Child Abuse, Garden City Child Abuse Prevention Month in honor of our children and those families and those services that are reaching out to those families to prevent and hopefully eliminate child abuse. So, I just ask that to be considered today.
I'll make the proclamation as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I'll read this, then probably take a picture or two. Whereas children are key to the state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, and while children are our most valuable resource, they are also our most vulnerable. And whereas children have a right to be safe and should be provided an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow, and whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening Kansas's families, thus preventing the far-reaching effects of maltreatment, providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds, and consequently building foundations of communities. And whereas we must come together as partners so that the voices of our children are heard by all, and we are, as a community, extending a helping hand to children and families in need, and whereas by providing safe, stable, and nurturing relationships for our children free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can assure, ensure that Kansas's children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of the state and nation. Now, therefore, I therefore, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, to hereby proclaim April 2017 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Garden City and call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to prevent child abuse, thereby strengthening the communities in which we live. Signed and sealed this fourth day of April 2017.
Thank you so much. Now, our director.
All right.
Well, everybody behind you moved wrong way.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Have a good month.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 6B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Eric Senatempo on behalf of the Appliance and Furniture Mark for a waiver to the signed and temporary structural requirements from April 26 through May 8 at their location at 1117.
I'll make the motion to approve the request for an appliance and furniture.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request by Appliance and Furniture Mark for waiver to sign temporary structural requirements from April 26 to May 8. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item 7A, the governing body is asked to, or is being advised if we anticipate to be the budget calendar for the coming meetings. The, here's some important dates. First of all, April 18, which is our next regular scheduled meeting, we'll begin review of some of the special revenue funds. The, some other dates of note, May 10 is the date which, sectorally, the county treasurer provides vehicle tax estimates. And then also, there is a... I don't know if everybody's just good like that, but June 15 is now the date that we would get our property tax evaluations and estimates. It used to be July 1, but it's moved up based on some action the legislature took in recent sessions. So, I trust you've got a full page. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those. We're well on pace to have the budgets submitted to the state time for the August 25 deadline.
The July meeting, is it the 6th? Is that right? That's on Thursday?
Can't tell right now.
At 9:00 a.m. July 6 at 9:00 a.m.
9:00 a.m.
And that's because, okay, I was just looking at that. That's because we wouldn't be...
Fourth year.
Yeah. It wouldn't be absolutely necessary to do that. It would just allow you to conclude your deliberations by the 18th of July, otherwise
See what's on the agenda.
You could be waiting until August to conclude your budget.
This can be adjusted as...
Yes.
Probably, usually, I think we stick pretty close to the original idea. Can change if it needs to.
All right. Item 7... 7B. Presentation of the February 2017 numbers from Garden City Regional Airport and also the sales tax report from Melinda. Any questions on either of those?
The payments are really up a lot. This is nice.
We have meetings of note. Spring cleanup is underway. It was a high-volume day yesterday, so we'd ask folks to be patient after a day. I think we're a half-day behind according to Sam. So, the rain's going to slow that down a little bit today, too. So, we'll, if the stuff isn't picked up by us, then it will be picked up. And we, it's a two-week spring cleanup. We have the town divided geographically five ways, and so we allow ourselves a week of slack. Been tapered off quite a bit the last few spring cleanups, but we're back to what we would consider to be normal volume. Just a little bit behind schedule, so we may be a day behind in what shows up on the map that we've put out through our public information, which is... Some other meetings of note on there. Got any questions? Be happy to answer those. Please RSVP with C-LAN for any of those that you're interested in attending. I think we're ready to move on to 9A, which is the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be number 2432-2017A.
Mr. Mayor, make the motion to approve appropriations ordinance 2432-2017A.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 2432-2017. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, there's been a request by the applicant to withdraw item 10A, which was a request to annex. So, that's no longer to be considered. There's no old business. So, with that, we're ready for item 12A. The governing body is asked to review power supply options. John Krausky of JK Energy Consulting will present an analysis of power supply proposals. The governing body will be asked to select a power supply option at the May 2, 2017 regular meeting. I'll turn this over to Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. As Matt indicated, John Krausky is here from JK Energy Consulting. He's going to walk you through a presentation here in a few minutes on power supply. And we also have Corey Moonball here from Sunflower Electric, he's the vice president of Power Supply. And we also have Paul Malberg and Sam Mills of KMEA. Paul is the general manager for KMEA, and Sam is the managing director of electrical operations. So, I thought I'd introduce him early. If there's questions, they may have something that they want to say, maybe after John makes his presentation. Just I'll give you a little quick background here to get us up to speed, and then I'll turn it over to John. In 2014, as you know, the city started receiving power from Kansas Municipal Energy Agency, KMEA. In that process, we had acquired several different contracts that had differing terms. Some were capacity of energy, some were just capacity, some were energy only. We've got through the first four years of that, and now some of those contracts are ready to roll off, about to expire. So, what we've been doing ever since then is reviewing power supply options that will guide Garden City, I guess, into the future, what we'll do for power supply. We asked KMEA to look at several different things. One of them was the Dogwood Energy Facility. If the city were to be beneficial to us to look into purchasing equity ownership in the Dogwood Energy Facility. The Dogwood plant is just on the other side of the Kansas border in Missouri. So, that's where that's located. We also asked them to visit the Kansas City Board of Utilities for Power Supply. We asked them to work with CIGA Engineering, and we've worked with a lot on what it would cost, and then John's going to evaluate whether it would be beneficial to put in additional local generation here, and then also look at what the 10-year forecast could be, if they could shine up their crystal ball, what the market would look like for us in the next 10 years. We purchased a substantial amount we had in the last few years off the market, which has proved beneficial, and John can talk more about that. Anyway, we wanted to look at that, and then we also asked Sunflower Electric Power Corporation if they'd be interested in providing any type of power supply in a shorter term, which John will go through all of that. So, we have all that information, and John will walk you through his proposal and his analysis. We don't, we're not asking for you to make any decisions today. Just take this information, ask these folks any questions that you may have, or staff, and then what we'll do over the course of the next month is refine those answers, the questions you may have. Then at the first meeting in May, we'll come back with a recommendation, and you guys can make a decision at that time or direct us to do something different. So, with that, I'll turn it over to John.
Hopefully, I won't. Well, you have the mic. You might be hitting me right back in the head, though. Mayor, members of the Commission, thank you for the opportunity to be here again. My name's John Krausky. As you know, as I always know, it's pronounced exactly the way it looks. But I appreciate the opportunity. I've been here, I think this is probably about my eighth or ninth trip in the last four years, and I'm still very excited about the things that have happened here over the last three-plus years as we've transitioned into the new power supplier. I was here a couple of years ago talking about savings present from your new power supply, and I think it's been very favorable for you. We've also seen some savings in local access charges as well that I think are going to contribute to some cost savings going forward as well. So, that being said, I'm not here to talk about the past. I'm here to talk about the future, and the purpose of this presentation is to review the results of the power supply evaluation. This evaluation is focused on what I'll call capacity, and that's the ability really to supply energy at a given point in time. And under rules established by the Southwest Power Pool, you have to have enough capacity to meet your peak demand, which is looking at your single highest usage of our, power usage in the summer season. On top of that, you have to have another 12% in reserve margin. That's basically one of your power plants, or one of the power plants in the region goes offline, other power suppliers pick up that slack and make sure that the lights don't go out. That would be a bad thing. So, that's reasonably that there are established reserve requirements in the region. My evaluation is focused on complying with that requirement for the city for the next 10 years. Discuss conclusions, talk about next steps, and I think there's a lot of next steps regardless of, I mean, there's some that have fewer next steps than others, but if you certainly, if you pursue an ownership stake in the Dogwood facility, there will be a lot of due diligence to complete, a lot of contractual things to complete, and a lot of coordination with KMEA on financial matters. And of course, answer any questions. First, talk about your existing capacity resources. As of right now, you have 85 megawatts of capacity secured through 2017, through the end of this calendar year. Your peak demand is about 65 to 70 megawatts, depending on the weather pattern, so do the math on that, you've got sufficient capacity reserves to meet that requirement. Those resources, you have about 30 megawatts of that, what I would consider long-term resources. 27 megawatts is the Jameson Energy Center. That's the peak, of course, located outside of town. You receive 3 megawatts of WAPA capacity in the summer season, and these are all focused on summer because that's when you set your peak, air conditioner's running, refrigeration loaded at various places. That's really what I'm focused on. And now, the rest of that is purchased under short-term arrangements. And between 2018 and the end of 2021, so over the next five years, all of those capacity agreements are slated to expire. So, at that point, you'd be basically left with a 27 plus a 3, so about 30 megawatts of capacity. So, that's why we're looking at, the thing with the electric utility business, you can't just go down to Home Depot and buy a 30-megawatt combustion turbine and go plug it in at home. This isn't a Honda generator. These are things that require, if you're going to build generation, require lead time, require getting permission from Southwest Power Pool, from working with Sunflower and other transmission providers. Or if you're going to buy an equity ownership, as we're talking about with Dogwood, of course, you have all the lead-up activity with financing and drafting agreements. So, this is why you plan out in the future. And I would say that lead times are a little shorter than they may have used to been in some respects, but other areas, they take just as long or longer to get things taken care of. And I guess the thing I'd point out on this chart, the top pie is the WAPA. That's a relatively small piece of your allocation. You have 27 megawatts of Jameson. The gray and the yellow, that is all going away between now and 2021. And that's by design. When we initially started the process of converting from Sunflower and Wheatland to big software line, the first step was Jameson. Next step was getting some purchase arrangements in place for the near term, and then once those are in place, then we can start looking at more long-term resources. So, any questions on any of this so far? Feel free, as I go through, just to fire away. I find it a lot easier for me to answer questions if I'm actually on that slide. So, so we identified what kind of capacity shortfall we're looking at, worked with, as Mike indicated, we worked with KMEA, worked with CIGA, discussions with Sunflower to determine what options were available over this next 20, 10- to 20-year period, figure out what those, the pricing looked like for those scenarios, and then completed an evaluation focused on the capacity and the asset cost. Now, there's another element to this. You have to buy energy, but a lot of that, at this point, Southwest Power Pool has transitioned to what's called the day-two market. So, energy is bid in on day-to-day basis, and then it's applied on a regional basis based on least-cost dispatch. The reason we're focused on capacity here is because that's really where the reliability concern we have. We have that 12% reserve margin, and we wanted to focus on that. Energy is a factor in this as well. One good aspect of where you're located, you're surrounded by a lot of low-cost resources. There's a lot of wind. You've got Holcombe Energy Center sitting six miles west of you. What we've seen since the day-two energy market went into play, into place, is that energy prices in this part of SPP have typically remained pretty low. So, what we've done is we've secured our capacity needs. We have the Jameson Energy Center for peaking situation. We have an energy purchase from a utility in Nebraska, from a power plant in Nebraska. And beyond that, we've been dependent largely on the market for the excess. And we've bid the Jameson in to the market. Sometimes it runs, most of the time it doesn't. But then you're relying on, then you're taking advantage of low-cost wind, low-cost coal in this part of the country, and that has helped, I think, keep your power costs low. I think you look at your operating results for the electric utility, you look what those power costs have done, I think you'll see that they've been pretty stable over the last few years, and that's by design. I think it's been a good approach for you. All right, let's talk about some of the options. We did the cost projections of those various options and then completed an evaluation. I think I had the first draft completed and sent to Mike back in December, and we've gone back and forth...
Several times.
Several times. And that's good. I, one thing I want to say about Mike, I've known him for 20 years. I have clients where I send them a report, and they'll say, "Okay, it looks good. Come on down and present it." Mike keeps me on my toes. He looks through things. He throws out other options. And, you know, I think generally, we look at things the same way, but he's very thorough. And he's, I very much appreciate having a client who is on top of this. I think you should appreciate having him on staff as well because he's very knowledgeable. He works very closely with me, with KMEA, and he's got a good relationship, I think, with the other, with other utilities around the state. So, he's been a real asset to me on this. I think as we go through this, I think you'll see that we've analyzed some good options. I think you're in a good position going forward to select some things that will keep your costs low. All right.
You're not expecting me to pay you for that?
Nope. Just keep paying my bill. Keep improving it.
Where is it in Nebraska? Where does that energy supply on here? I don't...
That is an energy-only purchase, and there's no capacity served with that. And so, essentially, they're just providing the energy. They provide it at the generator bus there. We make a decision month to month if we want to secure transmission rights, congestion rights from there to our load, but it doesn't come with any capacity that you can count toward that reliability component I talked about earlier. They kept that for themselves. Okay. All right. First option we looked at is constructing local generation. And, you know, this is one that has a lot of value to local customers. You may have like the ethanol plant, for example, or other large users, DFA, for example. This would consist of constructing a reciprocating engine, basically a big diesel engine that would be located somewhere nearly adjacent to the Jameson Energy Center site. We worked with CIGA Incorporated to prepare a rough opinion of probable cost to determine how much it would cost to build the plant, and then how much it would cost to operate the plant going forward, staffing, and then fixed O&amp;M costs, lights, utilities, things of that nature. They provided us a schedule indicating that comfortably, they could have something online by about 2020, because I said you don't go to Home Depot and buy an 18-megawatt power plant. This would be a situation where it would come online probably by summer 2020. It'd be available locally to serve, to serve your load. Another option, and this is one that we've been coordinating with KMEA on because they offer, originally came through them, it would be an ownership share of a 650-megawatt combined cycle generating plant. And this is probably one of the very few times, I'm, my degree is actually mechanical engineering, and I, but I've done utility work my whole career. It's one of the very few times I get to use my mechanical engineering degree and explain what a combined cycle power plant is. Basically, a jet engine hooked to a generator. On the back end of the combustion turbine, they have what's called a heat recovery steam generator. Takes the heat from the combustion turbine, boils water to create steam, and you run that through a steam turbine. So, what this, what this plan is, it's two jet engines, one steam generator on the back end totaling 650 megawatts of capacity. By way of comparison, I said the city's load is about 65 megawatts, so that one power plant could produce enough electricity to serve 10 of the city, 10 of Garden Cities at the peak, at the peak. So, and it's located on probably, I would guess, a 20-acre site, so it's very compact. It's located in Pleasant Hills, the official address in Missouri, but it's located really on the greater Kansas City metropolitan area transmission grid. There's a big loop that goes around the city, and it's located right there. So, under the approach, we looked at, we looked at 30-megawatt ownership share, and the plant is currently owned by four municipal utilities. Kansas City Board of Utilities, City of Independence, Kansas Power Pool, and Missouri Joint Municipal Electric Utility Commission, which is a similar agency to KMEA located in Missouri. And under this ownership approach, basically, what, if you buy 30 megawatts of it, you're going to pay 30 over 650, that percentage of all the fixed operating costs, all the variable operating costs, you'll get a share of, that kind of share of revenue when they bid that plant into the market, and if there's capital improvements need made, need to be made, you'll pay that share of those as well. So, and the project, as we envisioned it, would be financed by KMEA, very similar to what the Jameson Energy Center would be doing. They have some other cities that are interested in pursuing this, so they would do a single purchase from this project. Then the city would buy its share from KMEA, just like it does with Jameson, then be responsible for debt service, O&amp;M, and also take KMEA into return, and then pay those to the operator. The four municipal utilities that own it, there's also Calced Energy, which is, they own the balance of the plant. They originally bought the plant, I think, out of a bankruptcy proceeding back in the late 2000s, and have rehabilitated it, updated it, sold the capacity shares of this. I do work for the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities, and I would say my conversations with the folks there, they've been very happy with their, with the operations and the performance of the plant. I could let Paul, he's worked for Independence Power and Light, and he can speak to his experience with them from his employment there. I've been very impressed with their responsiveness in getting information. I think it's a good facility. I've been there. It appears to be very well-maintained, and we'll talk about due diligence later on that. Market purchases. This would be involved, basically, doing what you're doing right now, just buy capacity from a third party. These prices would be, prices would be based on the market. There's a lot of surplus, you may pay a low price. Prices, if there's tight capacity, clients get retired, you may have to pay a little bit more. The two primary options, we did a general market assessment at the beginning of this process. And then, we sought specific proposals from Sunflower and from Kansas City Board of Public Utilities just to get a a firm number for those, and we'll go through those here in a second. Just talked a little bit about Sunflower's proposal. They offered five- and ten-year capacity only. They did offer an energy product as well, but because of the focus of this project, we just looked at the capacity part of that. After we looked at Dogwood, looked at some of the other things, we said, okay, what if we do Dogwood and Sunflower? So, we modified the request from them to be five megawatts in two thousand nineteen and twenty. Those part of the, part of the retirement or the expiring contracts. And then, increase that to thirty megawatts in twenty-one through twenty-five. We selected twenty-five, I think, based on, I was talking to Mike at the, after the last commission meeting. I think there was a desire to limit that term of that kind of a purchase based on feedback from the city commission. I wasn't at the meeting, I'm just kind of relaying what, as I understood it. BPU would be a very similar approach. Just, I would go back to Sunflower. Their their sources would be essentially Holcomb Energy Center, and then they also have a peaking unit. Very close proximity, should be very easily delivered to the city. Kansas City Board of Public Utilities, their offer, same amount of capacity. Theirs would be delivered from the Simran Bend Wind Farm, which I think is just fifteen miles away. Yeah, it's very close by. We wouldn't, we wouldn't anticipate any transmission delivery issues with that one as well. All right, so those are the resources. Got a lot of pretty lines now. I don't know how to use this. All right. One thing I want, first thing I want to point out, this green line up here, that's Jamison. And I want to, one thing I always tell Mike, whenever he sees that number, he gets kind of defensive about it. And I say, Mike, the time we were pursuing this, we needed quick. In construction, engineering, I heard, quick, cheap, good, pick two. We needed quick because of the timeframe. So, we had probably fairly limited options in terms of the capacity we could pursue. It may have cost a little more than the market, but I think it was the, it was the anchor that enabled you to do all these other things that we're doing. I I truly believe that. All right. This red line here, goes right across there. That's what it costs to build a local generation, that eighteen-megawatts of capacity. We're in a very low market right now. So, that's why you see, if you look at the Sunflower and the BPU, and I'm I'm showing all out past twenty twenty-five for Sunflower. But in general, these are all going to be right in that that range. Dogwood, I've got two scenarios for Dogwood. High scenario and a low scenario. The the high scenario is what I would characterize as a worst case. And that's where you buy the plant, the market shifts on you and the plant never runs, so you don't earn any revenue from the integrated marketplace. Historically, though, that plant has operated anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five percent of the time. And the only time it'll run is when it's economic to do so. So, there's, there's, the lower line, the blue line, is is really what we're looking at, what I would call an expected case. Market may change on you, it could go to the blue line or the yellow line, but it's still less than what it would have cost you to build a local generation. And yes, market capacity from BPU or Sunflower is cheaper right now. But with those products, you get what you pay for. At the end of the contract, you've got a piece of paper. With Dogwood, you've got an asset. I mean, so they're apples and oranges, I think. I think a mix of the two is good, and I think when we get through this, I'll I'll kind of explain where I'm thinking on that, so. Any questions? This is really, I think, the key to making this decision, is, you know, where where these prices are. And we'll we'll talk about this some more here. I've got some present value.
John, could you explain to them the cost off to the side, what's the two, four, six, eight? So, they're familiar with that.
Oh, sure, sure. Yeah, the these numbers are expressed in dollars per kilowatt a month. And essentially, what, it's a fairly common measurement of capacity cost. And basically, it's how much you're spending for each kilowatt of capacity, and you pay that each month. So, you know, in the case of the Dogwood high and the Dogwood expected, you know, you're talking about four fifty to four seventy-five a kilowatt a month for the high and probably about three twenty-five to three fifty for the expected case. Okay, if that answers your question, did? All right. This is just, this is for the twenty-year period, looking at what I'll call the, at the longer-term resources. The Dogwood expected is about six point six million. This, these are net present value. I'm not sure if, I hate explaining the present value, but basically, it takes all the cash flows for the next twenty years, uses a discount rate, and boils it down to one number that's based on current year dollars. It's like, how much, if if I could earn four and a half or three and a half percent interest on this money, how much would I trade these cash flows for a check today? It's like the lump sum or the annuity option when you play the lottery. Not that I played lottery, but but this is basically taking the annuity and coming up with a one, one number right now. And when you have varying cash flows over a period of time, this is really the best way to analyze the differences. I would say that if SPP market prices stayed low for the next twenty years, and I'll say, when I say low, comparable to what they are now, you'd be better off just buying paper capacity in the market. But those numbers will change as power plants retire, as loads increase. Well, we're not seeing that right now, but as as loads change, power plants retire, environmental legislation comes along, that capacity value can change from month to month, year to year. So, I would expect that capacity will be somewhere in that value, but I think in either case, I think Dogwood looks like it's in the middle between the low and the higher range of your market capacity going forward. Local peaking option, as as you can probably guess from the chart, it looks quite a bit more expensive than really any of the other options. And that's not surprising right now, the market we're in. You know, one one question I've, that has been asked of me just in passing is, well, why is Dogwood so much cheaper than buying new capacity? Well, it's an older unit. I mean, it's it's been around for about ten years, fifteen years. They put a lot of money into it. But it's also, the options we're looking at for the city locally would be twenty megawatts. Well, that's a six hundred megawatts, so there's some economy of scale benefits, too. You're taking advantage of the economy scale, an asset that was bought out of bankruptcy and refurbished later on. So, you bought a used car that that they replaced the engine in, replaced the tires, put new brakes, reupholstered the the interior, so. And that's really what we're looking at here, okay?
What deals that Dogwood plant, is it gas or?
It's natural gas.
Natural gas?
It's a natural gas fire unit, yes. They have a, as I recall, they have access to two different pipelines on-site. High-pressure interstate, you know, thirty-six-inch.
Is that price steady?
That price, in recent years, has definitely been steady to decreasing, yes.
But they have, they don't lock in long-term?
They don't. They, they don't lock in long-term because really, they just, they don't know how much they're going to produce until the day ahead, until SPP tells them. So, they'll maybe lock in maybe some gas in advance, but for the most part, they they buy most of their gas on the daily, at daily index prices. Okay? Any questions? Okay. So, aside, we've talked a lot about Dogwood, I guess, in the in the report. And I think, cost-wise, you can see where it is compared to the other options. You still have another thirty megawatts of capacity you're going to need to procure in twenty-one through twenty-five, and then, like, five megawatts in nineteen and twenty. I think just based on the screening, it looks like a short-term purchase is what makes the most sense for you. The BPU option's about two hundred thousand dollars higher than the Sunflower option over this time period. And I and I think, looking at all the other aspects of it, I think they're comparable deals. They're both paper, they're both capacity that meets the SPP rules. They're both located close to you, so you shouldn't have any issues with deliverability. They're close enough that you could flip a coin. I mean, it's within, you're talking about within three percent of the of the two numbers. The Sunflower number is lower. Save you some money over this timeframe. And as I said, they're comparable products. There's really no difference between the two. It's matter, I think it's a, I think, as I talked to Mike, I said, it's one of those where either one of them's going to get you what you need. And it's, I think it's ultimately a discretion of the city commission to make that decision as to which counterparty you'd rather rather work with. One more thing, I just want to talk about this, look at Sunflower option two versus local generation. I have another client who had a lot, a very similar to the beefpacking plant out at Holcomb. It was one of their customers. And they came to them saying, hey, we would really like local generation because if we lose power, and I know you don't serve them, but if you if we lose power for more than three hours, we're we're talking about losses that number millions of dollars. So, they're saying, what would it cost for you to put in local generation to back up your power lines? And I just did this one, and it's in the report. I just did this to say, okay, this is what the annual difference between buying from Sunflower and building local generation is. It's it's substantial.
Three times.
Three times. That's right. Now, if you had a customer that came to you and said, I really need generation right next to my plant. I need it to come online in ten minutes, or I'm I'm looking at losing millions of dollars of product. If they're willing to write you a check, and the check was at least this much, then you may want to consider it. And in the case of this other client I'm talking about, they did, they're pursuing that. But as I said, they, they're, they were showing us a cost curve of length of outage and lost product. And a six-hour outage would basically pay for ten years' worth of outage, uh, ten years' worth of those higher costs. So, they were willing to make, take that insurance bet a year at a time. So, that's just for consideration purposes. I don't think that's part of my recommendation to you at this point, unless you have that kind of a customer. This is essentially the same chart we just looked at, only just in raw dollars. If you were looking at, and these are based on thirty megawatts, so you can see where that, how that difference laid out based on that kind of a usage. One thing I wanted to just mention, talk to you about, was with regard to the Dogwood purchases, you're looking at, these are basically all the cost components that you're looking at. You have fixed O and M, that's the cost of labor, the plant, fuel, that's fuel that goes to the combustion turbines to create the steam and the heat, the electricity. You have some variable O and M costs, those are consumables within the plant. That SPP offset, as I talked about earlier, this is based on a historical year where they're collecting revenue to offset fuel costs, variable O and M, a party of fixed costs. Capital improvements, they've just recently completed some pretty significant improvements. So, you're actually coming in at a good time because they had just completed those, some of their maintenance overhauls, long-term outages. And they will need to do those again for another six to eight years. So, it means you don't have to pay for them. They're building that into the capacity cost, but you won't have to worry about that bill coming along. And then, the debt service would be based on KMEA issuing that debt, and then you would be basically paying them. So, you can see, really, the biggest component is really the debt service on this particular plant. Those numbers may change based on market conditions and how much they run, but they're only going to run when it's economical for them to do so. Okay? Any questions on that? Okay, so, based on, they, just, this is how your, this is how your capacity plan would look in two thousand nineteen, if Dogwood's part of the resource mix. Still have the WAPA, the two-point-three, you've got the the Jamison over there, the twenty-seven-point-two. But now, now, instead of having a big gap, you've got thirty megawatts of Dogwood. You still have some, you still have some market purchases that are yet to expire. Then you'd have five megawatts of your Sunflower or BPU.
So, who decides when Dogwood runs? If we count on them for a third of our supply?
SPP, SPP makes that determination based on, they dispatch the whole region as a as a whole.
If we need it, then they'll fire it up?
If you need it, it, let's just say, you decide, we want that energy from that, from that whole plant. You you could theoretically say, I want, I, you put a thirty-megawatt schedule from there to here. If they, if they, if they run the plant, then it would come from there and you would basically.
The need would be summertime, probably, right? And that's probably when that thirty to thirty-five percent of the time occurs, so it seems.
Correct, but the SPP's going to dispatch it based on the loads in the region. And if you, if you say, look, I want it at this, from there, at this price, KMEA will submit a schedule, say thirty megawatts from there to you, and 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 it'll get, it'll get delivered as a bilateral schedule. It may not come off of the unit, but it.
Somewhere in the system.
It could come somewhere on the system from that node back to your load point.
So, it's dependable?
It's, the outage rates are very competitive with units of this type, no question about it. Their their forced outage rate is very low. Of course, they're going to have maintenance outages in spring, typically scheduled, spring and fall when loads are down. But it's, looking at their outage rate, and I'm going to talk about, a little bit about some of the due diligence, I think, that needs to occur, too, so. I guess, I I want to talk, one real quick item on risk factors. If you read through my report, I talk a lot about about those things. And I think the very first one is that ownership versus market resources. I, if I knew what market prices were going to do five years from now, I wouldn't be here today. I would use my crystal ball to to make money in other ways. And I spent a little bit of time doing a, making a few trades, and then the rest of the time, I would spend skiing or golfing or traveling. But the one thing with ownership, while it's not, like, while I can't say a hundred percent this is what Dogwood's going to cost, eighty percent of your cost is pretty much determined when you issue the bonds. Labor, they have, like, thirty employees on-site there, that's not going to go to sixty. I mean, that, those plants are so automated anymore that, you know, that those costs are going to be stable. Fuel costs are going to jump around, but, you know, that's not a big factor in this decision. The big factor is the value of the capacity. And it's going to provide you something that's stable, it's not going to bounce around based on reserve margins, based on plant retirements. It's it's something that will, it provides you, and you won't have to worry about me coming down in five years telling you how to replace it. I'm sure that's a great relief to Mike and everybody else in the stream that's had to listen to me for the last thirty minutes. It's it's stable, you know it's going to be there. At some point, fifteen, twenty, thirty years down the road, it may get retired. But that's going to be a decision made jointly by by you and the other five municipal, four municipal owners. It's not a decision that's going to be made by a farm or utility. It's going to be something where KMEA is at the table, exercising your, exercising its voting rights to protect garden cities' interests. So, it provides you a stable, just like Jamison. I mean, it's a, you know, now, I will say, too, you get all the headaches that come with ownership, too. If a if a blade gets thrown in the turbine and you got to replace a couple of stages of blading, that's going to be a cost. That's a risk. But you're paying that, you pay that for that risk in the market, too.
I got a question.
Yes.
And I don't know if you can answer this, but in two thousand twenty, Sunflower goes way up. What, why? Why so much of the price would increase?
Oh.
In other words, you you got a steady increase to two thousand, from two thousand nine, nineteen to two thousand twenty-four, and then, bang. I mean, is coal prices going to go up? What, what's the reason?
Figure four, figure four.
Yeah, this was from a different part of the presentation.
Yeah, ours is a little different than yours.
This one here?
Yeah.
No, no, the figure four.
Figure four.
Go forward.
Page seventeen, it says.
Oh, in the report. This is, is this in the report?
Yes.
I'm pretty sure. Another slide.
Page seventeen.
You went by, if you go back to slide two.
I'm sorry, guys.
There, no, there.
Right there.
Yeah.
Mr. Lynn, Mr. Lynn, if you wanna...
Comment on your... Sure. There's a couple of reasons for that. First of all, I think, just to clarify, the option you're looking at from Sunflower only runs through twenty-twenty-five. We gave them an option for pricing beyond that. And the reason you see the sharp increase there is twofold. We have excess capacity now, and we have our own capacity requirement that we have to meet to serve our load. We have enough excess that we can market that excess at least through twenty-twenty-five. Beyond that, we start to get very, very slim, so we need to keep the capacity for ourselves. So we're pricing that a little higher, you know, to make sure we cover our own interest. Secondly, the market value of capacity is pretty easy to predict in the short term, much more difficult to predict in the long term. There's a lot of regulations coming down the pipeline, power plan, that may force coal plant retirements. Trump in office, that may not happen, but there's just a lot of uncertainty the further out you go. So again, that's why we've escalated our price to cover that uncertainty. But I think the bottom line is, we're only talking about twenty, twenty-five.
Five years.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, yeah, that's a good point.
Thanks.
Yeah, so really, you could ignore, really for Sunflower, everything after twenty-twenty-five, because that's the term of the agreement we would be looking at, so. Okay. I just want to read through these conclusions really quick. If you do thirty megawatts, whether it's with Dogwood or market purchase, that takes care of your needs pretty much through twenty-twenty. There's about five megawatts that doesn't take care of. We have proposals from BPU and from, from Sunflower that address that additional five. Then you're looking at additional thirty megawatts probably needed out in twenty-one through twenty-five. Dogwood's more expensive than current market purchases, but over the long term, I think Dogwood looks lower, costs than Sunflower, for example, in twenty-six through twenty-eight, looks lower cost than other resource that we're looking at. Gives you less long-term volatility. And, and in that case, where you decide you want that energy from that resource, it's a lower-cost resource than, than a combustion turbine or Jameson. Constructing additional local generation, it's more expensive, I think, unless you have that third party, that customer or desire to, to help pay the cost. I think that, that right now is off the table.
A short outage is a big dollar item, that's the difference.
Yep, exactly. Yes, exactly. You know, Dogwood, I, I will say too, that, you know, provide some other benefits. It's a good energy cost hedge. And we've done, KMA sent us preliminary investigating on delivering the capacity to you. The great thing about where you're located on the system is generally, the system is designed to take power from out here, in this part of Kansas, to the population centers in east of Kansas. So that makes taking capacity from Dogwood and delivering it here, the transmission's already there to take the energy the other way, to take capacity the other way. There would be a, a little bit of, I, I, there's some transmission cost improvements that would be necessary. But if you secure a long-term request of at least five years under SPP rules, you're entitled to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a megawatt for each megawatt capacity that you're reserving. So as long as the improvements cost less than five, if you do thirty megawatts, as long as the improvements cost less than five-point-four million dollars, there's no out-of-pocket cost to you. And...
What was the initial screening? It was less than a million?
Yeah. The initial screening showed less than a million dollars in improvements. So you can deliver that from, from Dogwood here without having to worry about transmission improvements. And I would say the same is gonna be true for BPU or Sunflower, but I think that's one of the big concerns we had, is what's this going to look like deliverability-wise? And it looks like you should be able to have that delivered, so. I think one of the big risk factors, I think personally, as I look at this project, the biggest risk factor is future capital improvements at Dogwood. It's not a brand-new unit. You're not taking the plastic wrapper off it. It's, it's been, you know, I think the previous owner, before went into bankruptcy, Sam has a phrase he likes to use, but I'll just say that it was, uh, it was probably not operated consistent with its design parameters. It was, it was abused and not maintained appropriately. Since, since Kelson's taken over, they've put a lot of money into it. I think one of the key things, if you get involved, that I think KMA's already doing, I know KMA's doing this due diligence, is hiring an engineer who understands these plants, looking at the maintenance records, looking at the physical condition of the plant, looking at outage history. Outage history is looking pretty good. I saw those numbers. But until we get a report from CIGA to know, okay, you know, the, the equipment looks good, it's been maintained, they're operating within design parameters. I think that's a very important part of that, because that's the biggest risk you face. You throw a blade or something on that combustion turbine, you could be looking at a, a six-month outage and a couple million dollars to fix it. So we wanna make sure that those types of things aren't gonna happen to this plant. And I think that's part of the due diligence that you would do. Recommendations: thirty megawatts capacity. Dogwood would be available for two thousand eighteen. You need that much through twenty-twenty, and then that escalates to about sixty megawatts thereafter. I think if stability with the ownership is important to you, I think Dogwood looks like a great project. Again, depending on the findings of the due diligence report actually by the engineering firm. I don't think local generation's in your, your interest at this time. And then, again, I have additional five megawatts capacity in nineteen and twenty, escalating to thirty megawatts in twenty-one through twenty-five. And the pricing is close enough on Sunflower or BPU. I, I don't think either party you're gonna go wrong with. I know it's a... I, I know each party can supply the capacity that we're need, that's needed, and would be a reliable partner in, in providing, so. With that, I've already talked about these next steps. I mean, these are all in the report. I will say that my conversations, I've talked with KMA many times. I've also had, I've also had calls from one of the managing, the guys who's the manager at Kelson, asking where things are at. I know KMA is working very diligently to get the agreements done, to get the due diligence report done with CIGA. They've already done the transmission service request. There will be a lot of other steps as well, but these are all steps you've gone through with Jameson already, like issuing bonds and get the agreements put together, so. With that...
Good report.
Thank you. And I, you know, I said a lot about, nice things about Mike, but I would also say too, I've worked with a lot of cities, and I, I know what you've been through in the last four years. Because I was, I was ankle or knee-deep in it. I, I'm very pleased with where things are at. It, it took a lot of fortitude by this commission, I think, four of you, I think these four were on there, and your husband was, when the decision was made. And I think it's worked out very well financially for the city. You know, I think there's been some strain on our relation, on the city's relationship with Sunflower and Wheatland. I think we've gotten past a lot of that in the last couple of years. I was very pleased with the proposal that Sunflower provided. And I work with Sunflower a lot, you know, with, through their clients as well. It's a, they're a good company. I think we went through a difficult time with them. I also do work with BPU. I, I think either one of those companies will, would be a good partner for that additional capacity. And, but I'm, I'm just really happy with, you know, even with all the pain, sleepless nights, and preparing legal briefs between Christmas and New Year's, it's, it's, I think it's been good for, for the city, and I'm glad to see that the results have paid off, so. With that, I, I do appreciate the time. If you have any last questions, I'm happy to answer those.
I just had a quick question on the, on that one chart. You had a shortfall of almost about a megawatt, or point, it was point nine.
I know, yeah.
How do we, how do we make up off that, well, back up, there was, I should've asked a little sooner, but...
That's okay. Do we just...
That's essentially the five megawatts, yeah. We just make that up off the market or...
Right. The five megawatts would take care of that.
Okay.
Of that shortfall. That, that's why we, I click that number. I like to do five megawatt increments, it's a lot easier contractually, so.
Are you, are you familiar with, with Kansas City Power and Light, what they're doing up there? Basically, they're basically encouraging people to be more energy efficient. And the only reason I can figure it out is that they want to buy more power from somebody else. I mean, they'll literally pay fifty percent of your, uh, if, if you change over to LED lighting, they'll pay fifty, maybe even all of it, if you do this. Now, I mean, there's a lot of incentive not to use electricity, which is kinda a little different than what we're, I mean, we're kinda in the business to sell power, and they're in the business to cut their power load back. I, I don't quite understand.
Well, for, for Kansas City Power and Light, they are a regulated utility. They're regulated by the Kansas Corporation Commission in Kansas, as well as the Missouri Public Service Commission in Missouri. And in Missouri, for sure, they have what's called an integrated resource planning requirement. And that requires them to say, okay, this is what it costs to build a plant, this is what it costs if I just tell somebody to put an LED light in, which, which ones, say, that results in lower overall cost. And that's what they're required to implement. Now, they're gonna still, they're still gonna make their money.
They're doing a good job of it, I'm saying.
Yeah, they're good. They're still gonna make the money off of the, the plants they have in place, and the wires that they have in place. But they have, they have a state commission that's telling them to do that. I'm sorry.
But to work, we don't have that.
You haven't integrated, well, yeah, you don't have an explicit requirement that you, that you go do that. And, and frankly, in case you feel employees here, I hope, I mean, frankly, you know, they, they do a lot of that just to maintain good relationships with their regulators. So, all right, well, well, and, and with potential intervenors like the Sierra Club and folks like that, it, it's, it's an investment, I'll say, in good, in regulator relationships. Some of that is, so. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe before you move on, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take the opportunity to call you if you'd like to say anything else about what they have, and Paul or Sam, if you guys like to talk, and then, then move from there.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I wanted to apologize for Stuart Lowery, our president and CEO. He wanted to be here today. He's at a GNT managers' meeting and unable to be. He rescheduled to be here in a month, though. John alluded to the kind of tortured history that Sunflower and Wheatland have had recently with the city. And I just want to make sure that you understand, from our perspective, that's what under the bridge. What we proposed is a good-faith proposal. We fully intend to stand by whatever the city chooses to do. And we, we would like to work with the city, and we feel that there's synergy between Sunflower and Wheatland being local to the city. So we feel that there's a good opportunity for us to work with you. And hopefully, if you have any questions or concerns about anything that's happened in the past, or our commitment going forward, you'd be happy to answer that. But I just want to make sure that you understand, we are committed to the proposal we made, and if you choose to work with us, we'll, we'll work hand-in-hand with you to make sure it was both successful.
Very good.
Thank you.
Nice.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners. Paul Mulberg with Kansas Municipal Energy Agency. I started there about a year and a half ago, so I'm fairly new to the organization. I did work for City of Independence, Missouri for about twenty years in the municipal world. Prior to that, with some of John's cohorts back at RW Vac, if you ever heard of the name RW Vac, which was a consulting firm, worked out of Columbus, Nebraska. So, I'll tell you, I love this. I love where you guys are at. I'm the, you know, the, the, the guy that comes in here to try to help you out on power supply. That's what I grew up on. I started as a consulting engineer doing power supply, went to Independence, did power supply, come over here, and you're the one city that has opportunity in power supply, so I, I love this. So just a few things about, probably just a comment on some of the things that you asked John first, the gas supply. The owners, on an annual basis or on an ongoing basis, evaluate whether they should lock in some gas supply or not. They have not done that in the last three or four years, just due to where the pricing's been. They do lock in firm transportation to make sure that they can, when they need the gas, they, they can transport it. So that's looked on an ongoing basis, what makes the most sense for the owners, whether to lock in gas or not. The ability to have the unit run, even though SPP doesn't dispatch it. Just like the Jameson unit, you can tell SPP, I wanna run this unit, for whatever reason. Likewise, Dogwood, we can do that. We can say, hey, we wanna run it tomorrow, or we wanna run it two hours from now. So we can do that. Again, that's kind of the reliability questions you had. So, you know, the plant, as, as John mentioned, it was originally built by merchant companies, Calpine and Aquila. And they built it to, to sell to the market. Of course, the end run issue came up. Calpine and Aquila went out of business. Kelson bought it at, on the court, on the steps of the courtroom, or the courthouse, if you will. They spent a lot of money putting in. Independence and the other owners bought into, into the facility in the two thousand twelve timeframe. So I was a part of that process. Since two thousand and twelve until today, they spent a lot of money going through these scheduled overhauls. They've actually rerouted both the generators. So that's basically putting the generator back to new. Those are six-million-dollar-type investments. All that work has been done in the last four years, so now is the time to buy into it, as far as looking at capital expenditures. I also want to mention that, you know, we're not trying to make this a, you know, this is a, a sales job, if you will. KMA went through a process, before I was there, tw- twenty-twelve timeframe, looking at all the resources in the region for all the cities in Kansas. And three popped to the top. Coal plant out of Nebraska, which I think you're buying energy from. A nuclear facility in Nebraska, and then this Dogwood plant. So the Dogwood plant has been on the radar screen of KMA. Back in the two thousand twelve timeframe, the pricing, to today, the pricing has dropped about fifteen to twenty percent. So the price has dropped from the two thousand twelve timeframe. They've put in all that investment since the two thousand timeframe. So again, naturally, it kind of rose to the top today. As, you know, that's what we do at KMA. We're always looking at the market, where's opportunities? So it's not something that we just did for Garden City. It's something that we just do for our members. We currently have seventy-nine members. We continue to grow. We're hoping to bring on a few cities here in the western part of the state over the next couple of years. So I think our model's been working fairly well for the last few years, so. Due diligence. We do have CIGA doing the due diligence. I've received a draft report last week. They're fine-tuning it. Should have it done in the next week. I'll tell you, everything's looking good from a due diligence standpoint. We are offering this opportunity to all our members. We have about five cities that are considering it. We've been in front of three other city councils, commissions. The city of Gardner has passed a motion to begin negotiations with the Dogwood facility, and they're looking at fifteen to twenty megawatts. We've got the city of Ottawa that's looking into it, city of Russell, and then the city of Linsabord. So we're probably gonna be at somewhere between fifty and sixty megawatts of Dogwood, assuming Garden City moves forward with their budget.
Paul, let me give a thought to, and this may be a question, I'll offer an answer, it may, what the what the Garden City's interests represented at a Dogwood ownership group decision-making might look like. I know John mentioned KMA would be there, representing Garden, Garden City's interests, but if you're purchasing sixty megawatts and we're purchasing thirty megawatts,
Right.
that, you know, the interests may, there could be a scenario where the interests don't align, I, I, I...
Sure.
Maybe I'm being a little bit neurotic about it, but how do we ensure that Garden City's interests are represented in the Dogwood decision-making if we really are doing that through a surrogate?
Sure. So, yeah, and I'll tell you, when I was at Independence, and we were buying the four parties that came in and bought into that, we were at about a, less than forty percent ownership interest, and Kelson was gonna be sixty percent. So there was a lot of concern about, you know, can they control the decisions of the facility? And if not them, they sell the remaining sixty percent to, you know, whoever, X, Y, Z company. Can they control the, the, the destiny of that facility? Can they control the, the, the destiny of that facility? So, the, the agreements that, uh, that the owners sign onto, we call it a double majority voting process. So, it takes over fifty percent of number of owners, uh, to pass something, as well as over fifty percent of the megawatts. So, um, it's structured for that. Now, getting to the KMEA, and we, let's just say we do have sixty megawatts, and Garden City has thirty, the idea, what we're thinking is that we'll pass down that same type of double majority, uh, onto our members. Uh, we're gonna plan to establish a Dogwood, uh, committee. Uh, we'll meet as, as, as regularly as needed. Um, we're gonna share information on a monthly basis, and it's gonna be the members, or the off-takers of this facility that are gonna control how we vote, um, at Dogwood. I will tell you, um, and, and Dogwood can, I think Dogwood may, if you decide to move forward, I think Dogwood representatives can come out here and answer some questions. Um, the years that I served on the management committee for the Dogwood facility, everything was unanimous. Uh, we've got aligned partners. That's probably the, the biggest thing to look at for all municipal utilities. And our interests ninety-nine percent of the time are aligned.
Sure.
So, but that is a risk. There is a risk that, uh, you know, uh, you know, the group decides to do something that Garden City may, you know, but they base everything on business decisions, you know, it's been aligned, so.
Thanks.
Um, I think, you know, I think I've covered everything. Uh, again, I, uh, you know, I was very excited to see this. It's been awesome to work with Mike, Matt, and John, um, on working on their, on your power supply. Um, uh, this is an opportunity with Dogwood. It's here today. It may not be here tomorrow. Uh, so, uh, and Dogwood came forward, gave us some more attractive pricing, some flexibility on the, the transaction. So, um, I think this is a good opportunity.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
I, I think that's it, Mayor, unless you guys have any other questions or anything. We've probably been talking long enough, I think, for a short meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, item twelve B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a development agreement between Stone Development Inc. and the city of Garden City, Kansas, for the LaRue Road, for the LaRue Overflow Parking Lot Project located at nine hundred LaRue Road. Carol.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Um, Matt, if you could go to the, um, the attachment.
Yeah.
That area. Um, it just would be easier just to walk up the thing with it all here.
I'll try.
Um, okay, so, the, the water park and the hotel have adequate parking for both of them. However, um, Stone Development Incorporated would like to add in some more additional overflow parking, um, for the water park and the hotel. And so, they are looking to extend, uh, create a ninety-eight, uh, parking stall lot here on LaRue Road, um, on the east side. And, um, there were, we did take it through site plan review. There were a couple of issues. Number one, um, their proposal for their sidewalk was only on that, the, the yellow portion, which is where the parking lot's gonna be. Um, the lot, they're required to put a sidewalk in the entire lot, uh, so that northern portion, they weren't allowed to put one in. Um, that was one issue. And then the other issue, um, this right here, um, this actually extends down into the alley, um, right to the south. And so, there was a question on, of, um, their entrance was kind of coming into our alley right of way, and who was going to maintain it, who was going to install it. Um, so, we addressed both of these issues, um, in a development agreement, which you do have before you. Um, they, they're asking for a parking waiver, first of all, for the north half. Um, the parking waiver, um, in the development agreement, it stipulates that they have two years from the completion of the parking lot to put in the parking lot going nor, or the sidewalk going north. And the reason why they wanna hold off is because they're not sure exactly what they wanna develop, and they kind of wanna put it in as they're developing up north. Um, and then the second, uh, main reason for the development agreement is for the, uh, entrance there on our public right-of-way to the alley. Um, the developers have agreed to install, um, the entrance, um, in concrete there in that little small portion that is in the right-of-way. But then after that, after the city accepts it, we will maintain it. And that's the two issues that have been addressed in the development agreement. Um, uh, the whole agreement is before you, and, um, you do have, uh, the alternative to accept it as it is proposed to you today, um, or, um, approve it with some alterations, or not approve it at all. Staff arguments approval, and, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I have two questions. Uh, if people use that parking lot, where are they gonna walk to get to the hotel?
There is, um, they will be putting in sidewalk. Uh, there will be sidewalk the whole length of this section. They will have a crosswalk that goes over, and then there will be, there are sidewalks all the way.
On the, on the other side?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, why not just, I'm, I'm not, I'm not fully understanding the entrance and, and the alleyway situation. I, I can't visualize it.
Yeah, I think, they wanted, they wanted to get as, uh, uh, they wanted to push it down as far south as they could. And in order to get the entrance, you know, the entrance is actually gonna be right here, and then it kind of makes a jog in. So, it's just that small portion kind of goes in, and then, and then actually, if somebody were becoming in, driving into this parking lot right here, they could continue down the alley if they wanted to.
Okay.
So, people are using the alley. Trash trucks will, will be driving over that also.
Yes, yes. And they, the reason why they did that is they, they, like I said, they were trying to make, bring it down further south so they have more room for development up here, and they wanted two entrances, and that's just kind of the way it worked out, um, on their plans, to get the most amount of space.
So, there is an entrance at the north?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and there is a sidewalk, as I said, that goes the whole length, and then there's a crosswalk that goes across LaRue, and then it does continue on the west side, the sidewalk, all the way up to the hotel and water park.
The entrance, is it gonna be the same width as this street that runs just to the west of that?
Uh, no, it's a little bit smaller, I believe, when it's gonna go out over it. I believe it's just a little bit smaller. Yeah, it's, it's a little bit smaller.
Like, um?
Oh, I would say probably by ten feet.
Okay.
Carol, it's thirty-one.
Sorry, it's thirty-one?
Thirty-one foot back.
Oh, okay. The entrances? Oh, that's not, you gotta, what's the size of the moving?
That street's probably thirty-four by two.
Oh, so it's only four feet?
Hmm, okay. Great.
It might be, it might be thirty-one, so.
Yeah.
So, it might be a little closer. I think it's, it's comparable.
I make a motion to approve the development agreement presented.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the development agreement between Stone Development Incorporated Incorporated and Garden City for the LaRue Overflow Parking Project. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Item twelve C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the real estate purchase contract for the property located at twenty-three fifteen North Eighth Street, Lot fourteen of Johns Edition, for one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, the Parks Department has been interested in purchasing this property, uh, to create a larger community park on the west side of our community. Uh, oh, Andy's.
You don't need me to?
Yeah, you're, you're good. You got this.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. If you could turn it to the math, it might be easier to explain that as well. In two thousand and thirteen, we purchased the property at twenty-three twenty-one there on the north side of the property we're looking at now, and the, the city has taken an interest via the Parks Department to have a desire to develop this whole property for a larger park on the west side of town or the northwest side of town. And so, at this point, we have been speaking with Ms. Pikes for several years. I know even before I was here, Allen had been talking to her, and we've been wanting to get this property in order to extend that all the way up. And so, now we have the opportunity to come into this property to be able to develop that park.
We own that. There's another house right south.
It's gone.
It's gone.
No, south is still there. Uh, there is, um, not a perfect alignment between what the county appraiser's office says the property boundaries are and what, uh,
Reality says.
And, yeah, and what reality says and is, is said over time, uh, which is part of what makes, I believe, the sale of this property from the Pikes and City a very natural one. We can resolve that without, uh, conflict, and by conflict, I don't mean anger. I just mean, that would have to get reconciled somehow, uh, if the property were to transition to someone. Uh, you aren't gonna find a lender that's gonna be okay with the entire living structure and a quarter of the storage structure being not located on the property. Um, so, the, yeah, it's, it, it's a good fit. It's a property we're definitely interested in. I've visited with the Fittipow Foundation. Uh, while they are in a position to assist, they have been contributing towards a property acquisition strategy, uh, and, uh, have, uh, and, and aren't opposed to the idea of maybe backfilling some of this one hundred and twenty thousand dollars in future, uh, special requests, uh, of, of the foundation in years where maybe the, uh, and, uh, oil and gas markets a little better.
I make a motion to approve, uh, purchase of the, uh, real estate as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve a real estate purchase contract for twenty-three fifteen North Eighth Street for one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks, Andy.
Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Great Plains Development Inc. for the city membership and participation in the amount of three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you. There's two pieces to this. I got, I didn't, I'm gonna catch me. Okay, thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Did I lose that? Thank you. Mayor, Commissioners, staff, thank you very much. It's good to see you again. And there are a lot of exciting things going on at Great Plains. And what I'd like to do, without dragging you through a complete explanation of everything that we do, because I think most of you know, uh, you could go to the ivory-colored summary sheet there. It's probably the easiest thing to follow. And as you know, we wear two hats, the grant hat and the loan hat. So, why don't I start with the, the loan hat, to bring you up to date on your city, CBG revolving loan fund. Uh, currently, uh, you have a balance of three hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars in there. There are two, uh, current loans, uh, that are done with just the city funds. Um, to, to add to that, uh, there are some county funds out there. There's two county, uh, loans sitting out there, and one also that has a, a, a Great Plains partnership with it, and another that has a, a Garden City Area Industrial Development, GCAID, as we call it, loan. So, currently, if you look at the whole pool, uh, the county has two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. Economic Development, we help, uh, Lana with Economic Development, E-Community. And if you look at the entire pool, you have currently, uh, locally, eight hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars available for loans. And this last year, we've been pretty darn active, um, along with, uh, uh, one of the current loan applications, and actually, I, I'm, since I've done this sheet, we have three current loan applications going on inside the city here. Um, and we also had four loan leads last year, none of which really qualified for county funds or city funds. One of it closed, um, and was a local, uh, partnership with the, with the local bank. And as we, as you know, on your behalf, we always say banks come first. So, we always work to make sure that they're working with the bank first. If, for some reason, the bank needs assistance, that's where we look at, can we use city funds to assist the bank? And as we've talked about in previous years, there are all the different requirements those city funds have that, that we have to walk everybody through to make sure that, that they qualify. Low, moderate income, we have a little bit of an environmental, if it involves construction, we kind of stay away from the construction, so we don't have to worry about the environmental. But that's part of what we do, is we walk everyone through those steps. The other neat thing going on is, a lot of the banks are calling us directly. They're making referrals to us directly. They're calling us up and asking a full partner. Uh, they're asking us on the side, too. We help with SBA, the two different types of SBA loan packages, so we'll help the bank with that. So, we do have a lot of current activity going on. Last year, we also did have a, uh, an inquiry from Holcomb. So, we were, actually, we've been working, uh, with that Holcomb lead for about two years, so. And we also have another Holcomb lead that popped up toward the end of next year. He hasn't come back, but, but at least we've, we've got him on the hook. Um, so that, if that helps you a little bit, there is a sheet in there with Mike's type. You'll see tiny little type, and I have to put on my glasses to read it. Those are all the different funding and grant sources that we have available. Uh, and you can see all the different ones that, that are available, along with your funds. Um, and the other funds that I talked about locally, there are some Great Plains funds that we can bring in to help inside the city, too. We, we try very hard just to focus on the city funds when, when it's a city loan. So, know that those other funds are kind of there as, as a backup. And currently, I think Lana, the, the ones that we have going currently, we just had two recently that Lana passed my direction. Uh, what we try to do to make it easy for you, or to make it easy for someone like Lana, is we do some pre-screening, and we'll, we'll walk through the process to see if it's a potential loan. So, we, we kind of take them through the whole thing. The other neat thing is, if Kansas Small Business Development Center hasn't talked to them, or they don't have a plan, or they need a plan, we tie them up with that. And then, our loan application dovetails right with KSBDC, so they can help us fill those forms out. And they're pretty straightforward and simple. We can do it online. We can do fillable PDFs. We, we've made it a really simple process. So, that's, that's kind of an update on, excuse me, some of the loans that are going on separately. Community development block grants, we don't often talk about that, because, you know, inside, uh, our micro capitals and cities, you usually don't qualify for those types of funds. Once in a while, there's a targeted project that might work, and I guess an example would be Compass Behavioral Health. Because I never thought we would actually do one in Ford County like this, but, but Compass came and said they needed a, a, a new building. That's what we call a targeted project. So, we can actually get grant funds to work inside the city limits. We simply survey the people that benefit from that project. So, you can see with Compass, it's just their, their clients. So, that's a good example. If you're in a work session, talking about things, have a request from someone, uh, call Fay, call myself, and we'll be glad to kind of think out loud with you on any of those projects. Because those funds are there. We, we should utilize them. I mean, they, they are available. Uh, and by the way, Fay wanted to be here today. Long story short, Fay had an accident and broke her arm on Thursday and had surgery, so she apologized for. so she apologized for not being here, she really wanted to be here. As far as some of the other things going on, there are additional funds that you don't have to worry about, that we think about, that are also available here in the county from places like Network Kansas, and that's, that's a group that, that Lana works with with economic development. Some of the new things going on, one of the things that we did, that I think will be handy for you, is as a state group, but there's about eight of us that have regions like this that we serve, we got together with USDA, and we got a grant written. We took and created a data portal for you, and anyone else in the, the cities or counties, to access current data through WSU, K-State, and KU. What does that mean? You're familiar with the Kansas Statistical App Trek that we all use for, for data. There's a live link to that, and it's in, it's in your folder there. You can go on and utilize that. It'll pop up with Great Plains as a portal, and then you can look at your region here, or you can go to other regions in the state, and you can drill down as far as cities, clear down to the city level. You can do everything from housing to demographics, any current information's available. What we said to the universities was, we love your information, but how do we get it in between times? So, this was a way to live link all that information. So, it's actually a live link. As the data changes, your, your data will change online automatically. So, that, that link is in there.
Where's that at?
Where's that at? There should be a sheet there.
And grant partnership Garden City sheets, it's toward the front.
And you'll see, in typical KU fashion, and I gave them a hard time about it, but I gave K-State a hard time, but there, KU has a link clear down in the corner there, it's kind of hard to find and see, but it's there.
Thank you.
Can you see it? Sure.
Technical assistance services.
Do you see that?
Just ask?
Pardon?
Just ask?
It's embedded in a picture on the bottom right here in the corner of this.
Clear, clear down in the corner. Thanks.
Right here. Well, that part's data.
Did you find it, Andy?
KU, PIDC.
That's correct. And when you bring up the portal, you'll see it's divided up, you'll see Great Plains in the list. If you go to that, you'll, you'll receive a, a link to all the Finney County and Garden City direct information in there.
Cool.
And it's, it's really handy, and it helps all of us, because one of the things we do for you, one of the secret things that you never knew about, is we work with the federal government and the Economic Development Administration. They ask us to put together a twenty-eight county survey of what's going on and what's out there. This is one way we were able to help do that, because they're able to give them live information. We put together a five-year overall summary for them, and then every year we update. So, if oil and gas begins to decline, we let them know. If wind power's going up, we let them know, and we keep all those, that information flowing to them, so that they can keep track of what goes on. So, that's there for you. Also, I put a K-State Advanced Manufacturing Institute brochure there, which, this is a really neat thing, they have a little bit of grant money. If we have a manufacturer, or if you come across a manufacturer that needs engineering assistance, there's a little bit of grant money available to get them some help from K-State. So, let's say they, they need to help with software, or robotics, or improving their assembly line, or fixing a robotic welder, or doing something new or anything, we can get, get them tied up with AMI. And the reason AMI's using us is because we're always out in the field, and sometimes we come across these people, so we're trying to help funnel people that direction. And then, lastly, we have a small grant available, five thousand dollar grant, that when we're working with those Network Kansas funds, we can get an additional grant for anyone that's doing something new and different, like social media marketing, website development, those types of projects. You can't do restaurants, or some of the more traditional things, but we can get them a little bit of extra money. So, know that that's available, too. And when we take a loan application, we see whether we can make some of these things fit together for them. From an overall standpoint, with all the counties, first of all, thank you very, very much for, for being a sponsor for us. It's voluntary. A lot of the other regions, it's actually a tenth of a mill. For us, it has nothing to do with taxes, it's, it's voluntary. So, we truly appreciate your, your membership over the years. It allows us to give no-cost services if somebody has an application, or we need to travel, or, or we need to service some of the loans, we get on the road and do it. So, this is, it's tremendous for us, because we don't charge upfront for, for what we do. We actually provide those services. And lastly, thank you for your member, who is also our Board of Director, and also our President of our Board. Commissioner Frank Howser has been great over the years, and I think the Commissioner now knows how many different things we do all across the region, but it, it's, it's an important service.
Do you know any acronyms? You know them by, you know them by heart, see, the rest of it, that's a little.
I make a motion to approve the request for the membership.
I'll second.
Thirty-seven fifty.
It's the same as last year, it's, it's an accounted sponsor for the other.
We have a motion, a second, to approve a membership with Great Plains Development in the amount of three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you so much. I have an invoice for the clerk, and for the mayor, I have two sheets, you can sign vote, and we don't have to make photocopy.
So, only nineteen hundred and fifty dollars per second?
Yeah.
So, I guess that's a wash, isn't it?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Mayor, Commissioners, side of E is a consent agenda, there's no changes, so it would be E one through five.
There is a license that we are going to pull.
That's right.
El Paso Mio did not, it's listed in the memo, but we're pulling that, by the time the hybrid went out, and still haven't met him.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the consent, ten, one, two, five, accept what was noted.
I'll second. A motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda, E one through five, with the noted removal. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is this the one we're going to executive session?
No, no, we, we.
We don't have any.
You're going to be able to keep one under a couple hours, Mayor, just, you're finally getting the hang of it.
I was planning on a lot less than this today. So, we'll go right to commission reports, and that will be the last thing we do, and so we'll start with Commissioner Frank.
Really enjoyed the DFA virtual tour, I guess you'd call it.
It's the dry tour.
Dry. It was really interesting, and, and some of the facts, wrote a few of them down, it was interesting. What was, what was it?
You wrote it.
I wrote it down. There was, there's twenty-six miles of pipes, ninety-two miles of electricity conduit, and five hundred and thirty miles of wiring in that little plant out there, which was kind of interesting. But they take eighty truckloads of milk, and it produces five hundred and fifty thousand pounds of powder a day. So, it was, it was very interesting. Implants are up, sales taxes down, which is kind of surprising, but anyway, hopefully it'll, it'll level out, and that's all I have.
Commissioner Sessna, agree with Commissioner Frank Howser on the tour of the DFA plant, very impressive, and a good asset for our community. Just, again, encourage everybody to take advantage of the spring cleanup. I know it's kind of wet right now, but that'll be going on for the next couple of weeks, and then the Fridays are kind of the follow-up type thing, so you might call the city if, if we haven't hit those areas. But again, take advantage of the spring cleanup as we're doing it the next couple of weeks here.
We're going to need Friday.
And you'll definitely need Friday.
Full day behind.
Okay. Just because of the weather, right?
The weather and the amount?
Oh, the amount, okay.
Lot of mattresses.
Yeah. That's all I got, thank you.
And couches.
Commissioner Dale?
I wish to dino what Commissioner Frank Howser said about the tour. I hope we get to someday actually walk around in it and follow the, the color code. I didn't see one there that told you how you got to the bathroom.
Yeah.
But they got everything else color-coded in. The, the Child Abuse Prevention Month is, is always an important thing to me, and I appreciate the, the Kansas Child Service Lead here in Garden City, and what they do. As a, as a, as a previous investigator investigating child. It, it, it's a really sad thing, when you get into one of these homes, and you see what's happened inside of a home. I had an experience one day of, of being involved, where an eighteen-year-old woman, it was actually child molested from the time she was young all the way till up until she was married, and to see her laying on the floor in a fetal position, and we just fallen apart, because this is the first time she had broke the silence. So, I ask people to be aware, you can, you can go on next door, you can go on in many different capacities, but be aware of what's going on around you, and if you have questions, you can always contact the police department, and they can advise you as, as to, you know, or at least they can take over from where you're at and look into these things. But don't, don't ignore it, it happens all the time. Thank you.
Commissioner Dolph?
Well, if my pop-up five-year reminder came, is correct on Facebook, it told me today that it's been five years since we've had the American Eagle Airline with our jet service to Dallas, Fort Worth, and I just, I look back on and see the economic improvements that have happened since that happened, and the impact it has on Southwest Kansas, and just think it's pretty cool.
That's it?
That's it, that's all I got.
Yeah, well, yeah, the, the DFA plant is, is amazing, you know, whether it's the construction, or what they're going to do after they're open and running, and, and a lot of the good things, you know, that some days, you know, be somewhat water-neutral, and just, you know, all the things they're doing to, to make that plant, you know, be a good thing when it's in operation, in, in more ways than just employing people and turning it on. So, it was very interesting, it would be interesting to actually go in the plant, but then, all, all the other stuff today was, that everybody else already talked about's great, and echo that. Last thing I would have is, the other day, we, it was Cole Wassinger's last day, and had a reception here, and, and so, we, you know, there's another city division that's had some amazing transformation in the last few years, and mostly, you know, due to Cole and his vision, and sorry to see him go, but I think we'll all benefit from, from Southwind getting improved and up and running in better form than it is now, and so we look forward to, to that. That's always been a, kind of a partnership of two courses, you know, and something working together, and, and so, we've had some pretty good things happen when, when there's a joint tournament, or, or, you know, whatever, people just come to try two of the best golf courses in Kansas out, you know, and spend a weekend or something like that, so. Sorry to see him go, but wishing him well in his new venture. With that, Virgil.